Notice for this meeting, the last duty post every, all council people are here as soon as they get here. But if you'll stand, our Assistant City Manager Scotty Almar, ladies and gentlemen, please.
Please join me as a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible liberty and justice for all.
If we didn't just take a couple of minutes of silence for all of the people that were killed in Santa Fe, that's awfully close to our city. I make it so, we all think about that, I think, when it happens, and especially when it's that's close. And so, you know, for those eight students and those two teachers, I'd like for us just observe, you know, a few seconds of silence for them. You know, we operate this city with a lot of volunteer help, and we have boards and commissions, and tonight, we're going to swear in two of, or swear at two of those people that have decided to serve our city in a capacity. So, I would ask James Bailey and James Norcom to come up here and be sworn in.
Or sworn in, I don't know which it is. And I'll ask you to raise your right hand, and then I'll say aye, and then you'll state your name, and then we'll go from there. Aye?
James Norcom.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Whatever.
Doing so anything.
There you go. Out of the State of Texas.
Out of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
Will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help we God.
So help we God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Has some proclamations to read.
This one says, "Whereas more than 5 million people worldwide suffer from the devastating effects of lupus, and each year another 100,000 men, women, and children will be diagnosed with this disease. It is two to three times more prevalent among African-Americans, Hispanics, Asians, and Native Americans. And whereas lupus is a chronic autoimmune disease, it causes inflammation of various parts of the body, particularly the skin, heart, joints, and kidneys. Lupus research shows that 1.4 million Americans have been diagnosed with lupus, and strikes women about nine times more frequently than it does men. And whereas lupus impacts more than just the life of the patient, it affects the patient's family, friends, coworkers, employees, and community. Whereas the Gibson Lupus Research Center, serving the Houston area and surrounding cities, was founded as a nonprofit organization to alleviate suffering from lupus patients through patient and family services, achieve early detection of undiagnosed cases through awareness promotion, and achieve the eradication of lupus by supporting lupus research. And whereas early diagnosis and proper treatment are critical to the improvements of the quality of life, increased public awareness, education, and research are the key to winning the battle against lupus. Now, therefore, I, Al, and Owen, on behalf of the council and all the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby proclaim May of 2018 as Lupus Awareness Month, and extends heartfelt wishes to the Gibson Lupus Research Center for success and their core objectives in the future." I think someone's here to receive this, I think, or was. And I, and this is very special to me, because my sister died of lupus at age 25.
So, I know what effect it has, but I thought somebody was here.
Ms. Gibson?
Ms. Gibson?
Christine Gibson.
Christine Gibson, okay. We'll get it to them. Come on, Chief. Address that just for a bit.
This proclamation says that Texas hurricane season officially begins June 1 and ends, man, it's already on us, and begins, and ends November 30. And whereas the National Weather Service and the Governor's Division of Emergency Management have designated the week of May 6 through the 12th as Hurricane Awareness Week in Texas. And whereas the 624-mile Texas Gulf coastline areas of Texas, hundreds of miles inland, and our area in particular, are vulnerable to the devastating effects of a hurricane or a tropical storm, including heavy rainfall, inland flooding, high winds, tornadoes, and storm surges. And whereas the threat of life and the year-by-year increasing property damage from the destructive forces of hurricane and coastal flooding can be reduced dramatically by careful planning and timely implementation of emergency response and evacuation plans. And whereas the best defense is preparedness and public education about the dangers of the high winds, the storm surge, flooding, and tornadoes that may occur for hundreds of miles in conjunction with a hurricane or a tropical storm. Now, therefore, I, Al, and Owen, on behalf of the council and the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby proclaim May 6 through 12th as Hurricane Awareness Week in the City of Missouri City, Texas, and urge all of the citizens of Fort Bend County, Harris County, and this community in particular, to participate in hurricane preparedness activities and pay close attention to any warning instructions. So, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Now, may I want to make some comments?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that awareness notification and giving us this proclamation. Tonight, I'd like to publicly introduce Dakota Duncan. He's our new emergency manager. He not only has experience in governmental but military services, and so I'm going to yield the mic to him so he can say a few words. Dakota.
Hi. As Chief Campbell mentioned, my name is Dakota Duncan. First of all, I want to thank Mayor Owen and the council for allowing me to be able to step aside such an awesome team and faithfully serve the citizens here in Missouri City. Just a quick moment here, as we enter this hurricane season, just a simple three, make sure you guys are staying in warm, pardon me, staying aware of local weather conditions and the emergency evacuation plans in the county. Take some time to build a kit, and don't forget any insurance information and pet information, and always have a plan for evacuation and reconnection with your family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Very good, thank you, Bill. I think we're all well aware of. Yeah, I think we're all well aware of what happens when we have heavy rain, so, anyway, thank you all for doing that. This last proclamation says, "Whereas public works services provides in our community, or provided in our community, are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the effective and efficient operation of public work systems and of programs such as water, sewers, streets and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of the citizens of Missouri City greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of this, of these facilities, as well as their planning design and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments are materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they all perform. Now, therefore, I, Al, and Owen, on behalf of the council and the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby proclaim the week of May 20 through 26, 2018, as National Public Works Week in the City of Missouri City, and I call upon all the citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works, and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life." So, let's have all those public works people come up.
As everybody comes up here, I just want to have a few words. Thank you, Mayor, and the council for this proclamation. I am surrounded by a very dedicated team of public works employees. Please give them a round of applause. Since 1960, the American Public Works Association has been sponsoring the Public Works Week just to highlight the importance of public works on the community. Again, these dedicated team of people impact the community and the quality of life every day here in Missouri City. Again, there are very number of facets to public works. You could take engineering, you could take capital projects, you could take animal services, traffic, transportation, you name it. And I'm represented by this wonderful team here, representing all the eight divisions of public works. The mode of this year's APWA is power of public works. Again, be transportation, getting clean water, you driving through this traffic signal smoothly, these guys make a difference. And I'll just highlight one of the things that this team did in preparation to Harvey, which the mayor witnessed, was days in advance leading to Harvey, our fleet guys were refilling all the trucks for police, fire, and everybody here in the city. Our engineering and GIS team was preparing maps to identify potential evacuation routes and inundation maps, so we can stage the areas and plan for evacuation. During Harvey, a lot of our public works team were embedded with fire and police doing rescue and evacuation. Even after Harvey, two months after it, our GIS team was mapping out debris locations so we can remove debris from the front yard. So, these guys are the people who impact everyday life here in Missouri City, and I'm very proud of my team and happy to be part of this public works team. Again, I thank the city council and the mayor for the support, and look forward to serving you in the coming years. Thank you.
We having barbecue Friday? That's all I want to know, we having barbecue Friday? That's all I want to know, we having barbecue Friday?
All right, ready, everybody? One, two, three. One more. Ready, one, two, three. Thank you.
Corey, if I may ask, Scott, can you please come in? He is the, the framework of public work, sorry, I forgot him, so he needs to.
I want to get in front of Cliff.
No, you just don't get over, yeah, you don't want to get over the beauty.
Yeah, they're getting back.
Ready, ready? One, two, three.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
What are the activities this week? What are the activities this week? What are the public work activities this week?
Barbecue, I think, Friday?
Yeah. Had a lot of activities this week. All right, item four, public comments. This is an, this is an opportunity for anyone to address council on any issue that's not an agenda item.
I want to thank the people of Public Works for getting Reba Ridge redone, but your job is not complete, you still need to work your way down, there's still curbs that need to be done. You kind of did an overkill at my corner, and I appreciate that, but there's other parts of the subdivision that need attention. And furthermore, Mr. Owen, you promised to do something nice for Golda, because you put double duty on her, putting her with animal control. You haven't done anything yet as of last week, so you promised, you promised her something nice at lunch or something, and I'm going to hold you to it.
That we can't do, but I did write her a nice note that she'll tell you and thank her for it.
Okay, and Mr. Wyatt, you know, the best thing I ever got out of Missouri City was my dog. The second thing is the street. So, I would like, so you don't think I'm a terrorist, I want you to have this chewed-up tennis ball that my dog from the Missouri City Pound did. And you can play your tennis next time, and maybe get you a new one. Wouldn't that be nice?
So, give the ball.
So, I'll give it to the policeman, and he can present, and he can present it to you, and you can think of me every time, and you can think of the animal control volunteers who saved my dog, so he could chew that ball just for you, so you could play tennis.
All right. You had some other things, did you want to wait on them?
Yeah, I'll wait on them.
Okay. All right. Let's see. All right, staff reports.
Good evening, Mayor. I just wanted to say from the beginning that tonight's announcement will be a little longer than normal, because there's some important announcements that I need to make.
Did I, did I miss somebody, or did you want to?
You missed me, sir.
But on 6C, that's an agenda item. So, you'll be able to speak when we come to that agenda.
I got confused.
Yeah, all right.
Mayor, as most of you know, there was a tragic active incident on Friday with Santa Fe High School near Galveston. It's a reminder that public safety, as I share it with my employee, is a top priority in all communities, and that we must always remain vigilant. Last week, our city hosted a mandatory active shooter response training that was conducted by the police department. We continue to try to make sure that our employees are educated and prepared. Any event, something happens, but we always hope that that's not the case. As we mourn the Santa Fe victims, the city lort the flags that have stopped in their memory, and our prayers are with the families and the entire community, we ask that you please keep the victims and their families in your prayers, and stay safe. I would also like to remind everyone, as the mayor earlier shared with everyone, that hurricane season is around the corner. A few weeks ago, we sent out information on Hurricane Preparedness Week, and this week is Flood Awareness Week. So, both of those impact our communities, and we want to make sure that our citizens and our employees are aware and have adequate information. We will also be celebrating this week, public works employees, as part of their National Public Works Week. The City of Pearland is hosting a number of activities for public works employees throughout the region, and a number of our employees will be going over there to celebrate their dedication and hard work. The Veterans Memorial Dedication will be held at American Legion Park on May 28 at 10:00 a.m. Residents and stakeholders are encouraged and invited to this special dedication, and they actually will be unveiling a memorial stone presented by the Missouri City American Legion Post 294. As part of the holiday, all of our non-emergency offices will be closed. This includes City Hall's front lobby, the inspections and permits area, as well as municipal court and animal services, that's for Memorial Day. The Recreation and Tennis Center will be open for business from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and the city's Quell Valley Golf Course will be open for regular business hours from 6:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Also, residents who participate in the municipal solid waste and recycling program will receive their regular service. Again, they will receive their regular service from WCA during the holiday. A number of quick reminders, our CDBG scholarship applications are now available, and they are due on Thursday, May 31. The Second Skate Park, excuse me, Public Input Meeting will be on Thursday, May 24 at 6:00 p.m. at the Recreation and Tennis Center. And the Sixth Annual Summer Youth Camp or Day Camp sessions will begin on June 11 and will be held at the Quell Valley Elementary School for the first time. Again, won't be here at our community center, but it will be at the Quell Valley Elementary School for the first time. Also, Houston Community College, we've been meeting with them, they are now accepting application for the fall of 2018. I would like to thank the Missouri City Community Tennis Association, they donated 13 scorecards for our tennis courts. Luke Parker, I think I put this on my city manager's update, and his local Boy Scouts group, I want to thank them for building and installing a dog ramp in the animal shelter's backyard as part of their Eagle Scout project. We also had an opportunity to send congratulations to Chick-fil-A, who opened, they are the second largest Chick-fil-A footprint in the entire country. If you pass by on Highway 6, it's typically one of the larger footprints that are out there, and so we're glad to have them in our community. Special kudos goes to the mayor for being part of the Fort Bend County Historical Commission's Oral History, he was interviewed for How Government Works. The Missouri City Police Department for coordinating their annual Fallen Officers Memorial, remembering the legacy of honor. Our fire team, who did an outstanding job last week, not only for attending the Armstrong Elementary Career Day, but also hosting the Fire Station 3 Open House and building an outside patio at Fire Station 3. I happened to attend that this weekend, and I think we had over 400 attendees at that particular meeting, Councilmember Boney was there, and we're very happy for the success of that event. I want to also thank our Employee Recognition Committee for planning a week of activities during Public Service Recognition Week, as well as our Chief Performance Officer Kathleen Weisenberger and Sadie McCollum for providing an overview for our third session of our Citizens University. This past week, we had a great event in hosting our community center Plaza Ribbon Cutting and Family Fun Night. Want to thank our Parks Team, Communications, IT, Kathleen and Sadie for the tremendous job that they ended up doing. Also, a number of the council members that attended, we want to thank Councilmember Wyatt and Boney and Councilmember, excuse me, Anthem Marulis for coming out for the event. And lastly, our Communications Team for hosting the Second Annual Mother's Day Cake Decorating Event. Mayor, I end by, and this is a different type of update, I've received a number of recent calls from citizens asking questions about the city's treatment of medians in our, on Highway 6 and other highways. And one of the things that I wanted to make an announcement to the, to the citizens of our city is that we take that very seriously, but medians of Highway 6, particularly, one of the comments was the decorated bricks. Highway 6 is a state right-of-way managed by TechDOT, and should be also noted that Cartwright Road, Murphy Road, and Texas Parkway are all state-owned roads and not the responsibility of the City of Missouri City. It is important that residents know that the speed limit of Highway 6 currently is 55 miles per hour, which limits the options for landscaping, et cetera, that can be placed in the medians for safety reasons. We have shared these concerns with citizens, but we, a lot of folks don't necessarily know that all of our major roads are the responsibilities of TechDOT. Most recently, there have been some questions about our plantings and beautifications. I've tried to send information out to the citizens that council invested $2.5 million for beautification that is underway, so over the course of the next six months, we ask that you please look forward to a beautification project for not only Texas Parkway, but also for Cartwright Road. We take very seriously all of the beautification that's going on, and we hope that you can see some of that work that's going on in and around City Hall. Lastly, another issue that has been raised is our traffic level for our waste removal and cleanup services. Just wanted to let everyone know that WCA is our provider, and we recently asked them to provide the total number of pickups. We've received over the course of the last several months, I think, from, I think, six months, 552,000 pickups, and of that number, we've received 172 complaints, which equates to less than 1%. Even with that number, we are very diligent in working with that provider to ensure that whether it's 172 or 10, one is too many. So, we're going to do our part to continually work with them to make sure that the citizens understand that our city being clean and the trash being picked up is a high priority, and we're working with our providers to make that so. That concludes my report, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, item 6 on the agenda is consent agenda, and I know that I have someone to speak on. Item C, although we're going to postpone that ordinance, but we will still hear from you. So, is there a motion to approve A and B on the consent agenda?
So, move. Second.
Councilmember Emery made the motion, Councilmember Marulis made the second. All those in favor, motion carries. And as I said, item C is being removed from the agenda, but I do have Margot Binge who would like to speak to that item.
If I may recommend, because the item will be on, the next, or some future agenda, we can notify you when it is on.
Can I speak?
Let her speak now. Can she?
No.
If I remove this from the consent agenda?
Then it's no longer an item, so she should have, but I guess that would have been impractical.
I just hate for her to come, have to come back, I mean, again, but how do we?
I think this does impact the, whenever, it's, what I have to say, I think it's very relevant, please.
That's it, that's what she signed up for.
But we said no.
No.
But now that we've removed it, doesn't that remove the option?
Yeah, we remove it, and it's not on the agenda.
Then it's no longer on the agenda.
Then can I speak as a concerned citizen?
So, then the.
It was not an agenda item, she can go back and speak on the hear from the public.
Public comments.
Public comment?
Yeah, yes.
Let her speak from the public comment section, and there you go.
Should I wait till later, or is now okay?
No, if you want to come back, that's fine, I'll let you speak now under the comments from the general public.
Well, I'm going to be, I'm going to be quite, quite brief. Two points, first of all, it's my understanding of the.
Just have the name and address, so we've got that for record.
Okay, Margot Binge, 2722 North Dorrell Drive. First of all, it's my understanding of state law that this, as I have read it and as I have consulted with others, is in violation of state law. So, that's an important thing that you may need to take a look at. The second, and the thing that I really want to bring to your attention, is you already have a lot of teeth that's not being used. And what I did for you, because I'm going to keep to my three minutes, is this little blurb up here deals with what the state law says about passing more restrictive things regarding massage therapy establishments. The second part down here details how the city attorney or peace officers can take action now, you don't have to wait for an ordinance. So, it really just boils down to, if you want to do something, you can do it now if you have a problem. And so, I think if you would consider tabling the ordinance until you've done some more research, that might be an excellent idea.
That's why we pulled it up, the agenda. All right, very good, thank you. Item 7, or public hearings and related actions, there are no zoning public hearings.
We need to vote on the.
Huh? I thought we voted on, didn't we vote on the other two?
We got a motion, but we didn't vote.
Six A and B, no.
All right, I'm sorry. All those in favor, A and B. Glad you reminded me, I thought we'd already voted on it. All right. 7B, there are no public hearings and related actions. Eight, there are no appointments tonight. Nine are authorizations. Nine A is to consider authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the reconstruction of Independence Boulevard, Segment 1, and Staffordshire Road.
Move to the.
Second. Got you guys just all jumping in there. Councilman Wyatt made the motion, Councilmember Boney made the second. Is there a discussion? Not with vote, all those in favor, motion carries. Item 9B is consider authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the materials testing services required for the reconstruction of Independence Boulevard, Section 1, and Staffordshire Road. Is there a motion?
Hold it up.
Councilmember Boney made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Wyatt made the second. All those in favor, motion carries. Item 9C is consider authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement for veterinary services for Missouri City Animal Shelter.
Move to the second.
All right, hang on. Councilman Wyatt made the motion, Councilmember Boney made the second. Bruce wanted to. Bruce wanted to speak on this item. About, about to overlook it, and it dawned on me.
I think it's important that you support the animals of Missouri City. Couple people on here tried to, um, badmouth some of the volunteers, whatever. I don't know all the politics of it, but I think you need to say you're sorry to some of the volunteers and put through a motion to provide the well-being for the animals of Missouri City. You do other things for other parts of the city, you can help the animals too. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, motion carries. And then nine D is consider approving an authorization for the final Community Development Block Grant, twenty-eighteen program year, annual action plan.
I think it should be approved, especially to you, Mr. Wyatt, for what you did in Glen Park, telling people that they need to keep current on their dues and their subdivision fees. Uh, Missouri City needs more parks and recreations for other parts of the city besides Quail Valley Golf Courses and Tennis. So, I think block grants may be a source of maybe to people to get extra things for their own little communities, and you just can't always depend on subdivision dues because, you know, well, let's face it, you know, you bailed Alquella Valley with all their things, so you can kind of help the rest of Missouri City. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are here to present the final recommendation for the Community Development Block Grant for Program Year two thousand eighteen's annual action plan. As you are aware, the city has received an award funding from the U.S. Urban Housing and Urban Development in the amount of two-hundred-seventy-two thousand and seven dollars, um, for the programs for our upcoming year. The Community Development Advisory Council has forwarded the following recommendations for the action plan to be submitted to HUD, funding allocation as adjusted in our continual action. Under public service activities, the first item is for Fort Bend Seniors Meals on Wheels in the amount of ten-thousand-two-hundred dollars. Also, child advocate in the amount of ten-thousand-two-hundred dollars. The city's educational scholarship program in the amount of nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. Edison Arts Program in the amount of ten-thousand-four-hundred-twenty-six dollars. Under non-public service activities, the recommendations are for Hunter's Glen HOA Park Improvement Project in the amount of thirty-seven thousand dollars. Housing Rehabilitation Program in the amount of ninety-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-four dollars with sixty cents. The city's code enforcement program in the amount of forty-seven thousand dollars, and the city's administration program with a twenty percent cap in the amount of fifty-four-thousand-four-hundred-and-one dollars and forty cents. So, tonight, we're here to accept the approval and the recommendation and ask council to authorize the city manager to sign the grant agreement to submit to HUD. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we adopt the agreement with the exception of Hunter's Glen Park, and that that money be reallocated to the most blighted area that we have in this city along Fifth Street. And any funding left remaining that will go to infrastructure.
Okay. There a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? I guess my concern is, we, how many applicants have we had for housing rehabilitation?
Public service applicant or non-public?
No, non-public.
For this year?
Yeah.
For non-public service, we have one applicant, other than the city's program.
How many do we have waiting?
For the housing rehabilitation program?
Uh, we've not ever been able to do.
We, for this year, we have, um, twelve projects that we're on, that's underway, and we have twenty-two on our current waiting list.
We got twenty-two homeowners.
But we have funding for that. We have funding in two thousand fourteen funding, so they do have funding for those twenty-two applicants.
So, we've got, we have fulfilled, or will fulfill, every single applicant who has applied for assistance.
Currently, that's, in, within our system right now, yes.
Yeah, 'cause I, you know, I get concerned. I saw this devastation during Harvey, and, you know, we got people that can't even get back in their own homes, and especially in that area that Jerry is talking about. I don't know that they feel like they want to apply, but I just, I agree with Jerry. There's other areas of this city we need to take care of.
And the city is receiving funding for Hark and Harvey City.
I would like to add, because part of my frustration is, is that the area that I'm talking about could be the most embarrassing area in this city.
Yes.
Period. And we can't expect those people to apply and fill out applications. We got to get out of the office and go find out what their needs are. They're not the type people that's going to probably have a computer on every desk and, and what have you. And that's, there, there has to be some extension from city staff to explore these areas and make sure that we're getting money to, uh, people that really need the money, who need, uh, need those services. And sometimes we have to go ask and figure out what their needs are. I mean, we got tons of code enforcement problems down there. Uh, plenty of opportunity to help clean, clean up that area, and then I don't even know what the individual assessments are. And then I think also in the, in the future, we probably ought to have some guidance as to how we distribute this small amount of, amount of money. I, I looked at the education scholarships. What, was that citywide, or was that just to the CDG area? Because I was confused.
No, that's citywide.
Citywide. Okay, so I could live in Oakwood Forest and apply. Then I think we ought to have some guidance in terms of people who fall below the midpoint of the medium household income should get first priority. You know, we just can't, you know, if, if this money is supposed to be going to people that's needed, we need to make sure that we've got some guidance that it gets to the people that need it.
Yes, that's why Missouri City is an exemption, exemption city, so that's why they don't have to meet if they want...
That's not a good excuse. We shouldn't take exception to use to, to benefit us. We should, we should make an exception and make sure that we get into the people that it really needs to go to.
Did that community fall into the census block to, to qualify?
Yes.
Okay.
They're in Hunter's Glen, which is a target area.
And they fell into the census block that qualified them?
Yes.
Okay.
The Fort Bend County is also an exemption city, as well as Sugarland, Pearland, so Missouri City is not the only, it's not, the city decided the exemption, HUD decided the exemption.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying how we use it within the rules, okay? That's different.
As it relates to the projects themselves, if you look at actually the, uh, the plan, comprehensive plan for CDAC, uh, that particular project that, uh, he was indicating needed to be reallocated ranked very low on the list of priority versus the Fifth Street in that area. So, I think that for me, it makes sense to reallocate those dollars to an area that truly needs it and is higher on the priority list than that of, uh, the park improvement program for an HOA, a private area.
Okay. It is, this council's discretion to, to let us know what, you know, you would like to do with the funding, so we'll discuss it.
And I know some of the, some of this stuff is capped. I, I sit here and I look at, you know, we're, we're giving ten-thousand-two-hundred dollars to senior meals on wheels, and I know how many seniors in this community depend on those meals every single day, but I know that public service activities is capped at fifteen percent of the total funding. We're giving ten-thousand dollars to senior meals on wheels, ten thousand to CASA with all these kids that are abused, the scholarships we're talking about, and yet, you know, we give fifty-four thousand dollars of this money for administrative costs. That's more than we give on the public service activities total, and that's not right.
And could you, could you also speak to the liability aspect that the city would be under by allocating these dollars for the Hunter's Glen project, as far as, um, they have to sign a contract with the city? Is that correct?
Counselor...
Every sub-recipient signs a contract.
No, I'm saying as far as who can, who can actually go into the park, they would have to open it up to the public.
Counselormember, let me allow the city attorney to answer that question, if you don't mind.
And if I may just hop in with that, but yes, the, the entity would have to make the park public so that it fits within the guidelines of, uh, CDBG, uh, community block grant recipients. So, they would have to make it public. I would imagine that in the contract or subcontract, if you all decided to do that, we would have language in that contract that would require the recipients to keep the park open to the public. And we would probably also include language, I would think, that would require some sort of repayment if anything changes with the investment of the, the, uh, community block grant funding in the park, or that prevents it from being open to the public.
Would that only be for a short period of time, or long-term?
I'm sorry.
Would that be short period, for like one year, or?
Would what be for a short period?
The repayment, or the obligation that they keep the park open to the public?
I think, I think that the use requirement is about five years, so they would have to keep it open to the public for at least that timeframe.
Be in charge of maintenance.
Maintenance, the, the entity should be able to pay for maintenance. I don't believe that the funds can be utilized for maintenance purposes.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, as part of the public process, um, this is part of the engagement process that HUD puts forth. Um, you've heard, uh, over the course of the last several weeks, feedback from citizens. We provided you with the CDAC's recommendation. At the end of the day, you're the final arbiter in this process, and you can make recommendations to accept it, or modify it, or deny it. Uh, what I would say to you is, as we move forward, whatever your decision point is, we really need, as we proceed in the consolidation plans in the upcoming year, to really have an engaged discussion about high priority, mid-priority, and low priority. Uh, maybe that's a joint meeting with the, uh, CDAC meet, uh, uh, group, but I think as we move forward so that everyone's on the same page, is our focus going to be public service? Is our focus going to be infrastructure, uh, related to parks, et cetera, or a particular area? All those things are discussion. I think we need to have that dialogue, but in the end, it is now your decision on what, where, where you want us to go, and we, we, we will, uh, uh, deal with it accordingly based on that recommendation.
Has the community be made aware of the stipulation that the park has to be made public?
I believe that was actually discussed at the, the hearing.
And they were okay with that, right? Okay.
Yes.
There was a motion. What was a motion again, so we don't lose?
Move to adopt it with the exception, uh, uh, replacing Fifth Street with Hunter's Glen, and any money left over to be used for infrastructure.
And that was your second?
Yeah.
Okay. Then a motion and a second?
Has, has infrastructure been identified already?
Mayor, I would, I would suggest, um, uh, slum and blight is an area with, or, or infrastructure, yes.
That's what we describe it as, is slum and blight?
Okay.
I mean, I was trying to keep from saying that, because I don't want to be accused of being ugly.
Whatever it takes legally to make it work.
But the law says it's slum and blight, so we'll call it that.
Because of the time element, we, we received the two-seventy-two double oh-seven from HUD last week, so we have ninety days from that period. So, we do have sufficient time to take this back to the CDAC to make a final decision, if you would like. However, for the, for the purposes of the action plan, I think we need that clarity. Do you want the action of the CDAC involved in it, or do you want the city to participate or to, um, apply for the infrastructure?
Oh, that's what I think, uh, the council has stated, uh, but they can, uh, it's my understanding, their decision is to reallocate the dollars, thirty-seven thousand dollars, to be, uh, for slum and blight slash, uh, infrastructure, and then at that point, the, uh, staff will go from there.
Thank you.
I think that's a motion. Has there been a motion? Any other discussion?
Yeah, I've got one, and it's, and it's, it's real quick. It's not to change any of the action that we're taking, but the clarification on the educational assistance that we provide, you say that they don't have to live in the CDVG area?
No, sir.
Is that something that's set by state or, or by HUD?
Um, any public service program is eligible to any resident in the city as long as they meet the criteria of the program.
So, what's, what's the criteria?
There's, there's income eligibility criteria. They have to be a full-time student and be a resident. That's primarily those three responsibilities they have to do.
Does that also apply to county support that they get from CDV?
The county has a separate program, and so they...
I know. So, can they apply through the county?
The county may not have a scholarship program. I'm not aware of all of them.
But if they do?
If they do, they can.
They can, Mayor, but I think, as we said earlier, we've made a decision in Missouri City on the, what our focus and, uh, emphasis will be. In the past, man, meals with the public service, Meals on Wheels, scholarships, uh, our code enforcement area, we've laid that out. As we move forward, there may be a discussion to say, do we want now to shift that to be infrastructure, to utilize, uh, Section one oh-eight loans and some other, uh, 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 options to leverage the dollars that we have, or do we want more infrastructure-related projects? Those are discussions that the CDAC and this council can have, but at this point, we're operating based on the prioritization that, or the areas of focus that this body in the CDAC has laid, laid, uh, laid before us, and that's what we're operating on.
This program is out.
We have to re-say in a plan, right?
Sir?
We have to do another plan, right?
That's, that's upcoming plan.
That's when we do the upcoming plan, that's when we can put some guidance in it, and that's why I was suggesting that, you know, part of our guidance level ought to start at the medium household income, which gives more priority to the people versus at the high end. And so, we can talk about that later, but at least, at least there's some, some guidance. And there's no rule to say that we have to give scholarship money beyond the CDVG area. You know, if council decides that.
And I just want, I just want to make it, make it clear, I've been on this CDAC committee for about six years now, and this is the first time that this type of project has come before us. It's unprecedented. And so, I voted to move it forward so that we can have a discussion as a council, uh, and my reason for wanting to move it forward is because I wanted to get clarity. I never had that comprehensive plan. I knew the council. So, when I found out the priority levels and that this was a low priority versus that of Fifth Street and others, it made more sense to me to make sure that these funds were going in areas where we best needed. And I, not that this is not a worthy project, it's just at this particular time, I believe that Fifth Street is the best place to put these funds.
And I guess my point is, I, I think we ought to take a look and see whether or not we should be putting educational dollars just in the CDVG area and not outside, because that, that's if somebody from Riverstone could apply, they meet the criteria, you know, they could get a scholarship. And I'm not holding anything against Riverstone or Quail Valley or anyplace else, but it's CDVG, and to me, that's, you know, should go to the area where, uh, it's, uh, there's a, there's a real need, so.
Well, and I know that CDVG is on the chopping block. We may not get anything next year, because it's, it's been targeted as one of those areas in the federal government that may go away, and it's less this year than it ever has been. I mean, we're down to two-seventy-two. It's been over three-hundred thousand dollars before, so it's getting smaller and smaller and smaller, so. Anyway, there was a motion and a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. All right, item ten, ordinance is ten A.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, establishing temporary maximum speed limits for certain school zones located within the city, designating locations, dates, and times for such school zones, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and declaring an emergency.
And this is to take care of schools getting out for the summer and changing those speed limits. So, is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Marulis, second, by Councilman Boni.
Quick clarification, it's actually for summer schools.
For summer school, yeah.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Item eleven, or eleven A.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the mayor to execute and the city secretary to attest to the tax abatement agreement bind between the City of Missouri City, Texas, Comcast of Houston LLC, and AX Park eight-ninety Cascom LP pertaining to certain personal property to be located on a six-point-one-three acre tract of land situated north of Buffalo Run Park, south of Highway ninety-eight, east of Cravens Road, and west of the Sam Houston Tollway, within reinvestment zone number sixteen in the city of Missouri City, Texas.
Is there a motion?
Second.
We discussed this one last time. This is a tax abatement. Any discussion? Not with vote. All those in favor? Motion carries. Eleven B.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Texas Department of Transportation for overtime activities by law enforcement to reduce the incidence of traffic injuries[1783.57] and fatalities, and containing other provisions related thereto.
Is there a motion?
So, move. Second.
You made that motion. You did. Councilman Wyatt made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Thanks, sir. All right, item 12, our city council announcements. Chris, Jerry?
The next time I see y'all, I will have been married 50 years.
Oh, wow. On the ranks.
I'll keep praying for your wife.
Truly.
Big friendship, take them.
Yeah.
Quail Valley's having their Memorial Day parade, which, uh, I know, Alan, you'll have, put your big hat on and come out and, uh, parade with the kids through the, the patio home, so we're looking forward to that, and it's not just for folks in Quail Valley or in that area, so if anybody else wants to bring their kids in their wagon or their dog.
Cute deal.
It's, it's a great deal.
Cute deal. Air brokdown?
No.
Continued prayers for Santa Fe.
I celebrated my 44th birthday on this past Monday. This past Monday and my wife's birthday tonight, so I'll see y'all later.
We got you out of here so good. Let me just say that. I know that most of us, and I hope most of you, have gotten emails here in the last two days about power outages, and I, obviously, I, I know about it probably as quickly as you do, because I got an email from the general manager of CenterPoint. Let me just tell you once again, those outages are being caused by trees that are in the power lines, that are in a utility easement, that they have the authority to cut the tree down if they really wanted to, even though it's in your backyard, and it's the back eight feet of your property. That is a utility easement. And so, CenterPoint has a hard time getting into people's backyards to cut the tops out of their trees where the lines go through it, but unless they do that, we're going to continue to have these power outages or these little blips, because every time that limb touches that power line, it throws a candle fuse and shuts that transformer down, and it takes CenterPoint time to get out here to reset it. And I know people are upset, they're going to call the PUC, and they're going to do all this stuff, but I also know that CenterPoint has been going door to door in our neighborhoods, putting notices on people's doors that they're going to be in the neighborhood with Davy Tree Service, cutting those trees back, trimming them back, having sat for 10 days without power, knowing that a tree caused it. I've been there. So, just bear with them. They're doing what they can. The trees have bushed out already. They've grown faster than probably expected, but CenterPoint knows where they are. They've identified, they went through this in Lake Olympia, and they got those taken care of. They're now in Quail Valley, and they're in Hunters Glen, they're in other areas of the city. If there's a particular area that you're having problems with, if you'll let me know, I will let CenterPoint know that they need to address that particular area, and they'll take care of it, but just kind of bear with us. I saw a tree down, as I came here tonight, in somebody's front yard from the wind and the rain, so we're going to have it. Be safe.